Let's call this, let's call our special meeting to order. We'll wave the prayer this morning and if you'd like, we'll do a pledge. Flag, so quickly.
All right. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment to thank each of you to come out today, taking time to come out today. This is a special meeting. We have this annually. Prime reason for calling the meeting was for some budget, what we call budget cleanup, dress up. This takes place every year. And so at this time, we will move into item A, which is the 2015 budget, uh, funding request. And Mr. Butler, I'm gonna address, over to you, please. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Sherry. Oh, here.
Yeah, she's right here.
I'm looking over here. Um, Sherry can handle A and B. My last email I got from Sherry was about 6:40, if not later, Saturday night, to do with budget. And I didn't respond to yesterday morning on it. But last week, she was cleaning up on the budget. The idea here, like all governments, cities and counties, is clean up before the drop dead deadline was the 30th, September 30th. We, um, we coordinated timing on it. We're here today. Won't be here tomorrow and next week's Thanksgiving week and Murphy's Law will take over on the 30th if we don't watch out. So we try to, if we can't get something done, we still have the 30th if we can do something on. But I'd, I'd recommend that Sherry take A and B.
Okay. All right, let's just direct over here. It's her and you're gonna take it or the clerk?
I'll, I'll let Sherry do it. She worked, um, real hard on it and understands the numbers.
She has really been tied up here.
Yes, she has.
Last few, last week or so. Come on, Sherry, please.
I'll be the one to mess up the microphone. Mr. Chairman, uh, funding requests were no longer needed. Um, we were not sure at the time if those were gonna be for 2015 or 2016. They are for 2016, so, um, I do not have any funding requests. Those will be in the next regular consent agenda.
All right, so that eliminates A then.
A's gone.
Okay, thank you.
Um, B for the, uh, amending the 2015 budget, there are a few items. Um, you each have a thick packet in front of you. I apologize. Um, the very top should look like this.
We'll go with this one.
Yes, that, that packet is the amendments. Uh, the very top one is the budget amendment request from the sheriff's office. That's their year end, um, uh, funding request, final amendment, um, to cover everything that they need for their closeout and their audit. Um, if y'all could approve that, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right. Commissioner, uh, got a motion by Commissioner McLemore. We have a second by Commissioner Barnes. Further discussion with the board members. Having none, any one in the audience have any, uh, concerns on this? Not? Is any opposition? Having none, motion passed five and O.
Okay. Uh, the next two are resolutions. We will need to adopt those separately. All of these will be, um, spread in detail throughout the, um, within the minutes. Um, so I'm just gonna read the top if you don't mind. Uh, the first one is for the general funds, says whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County has restricted reserves in general fund for landfill closure and whereas said revenues, said reserves are needed to fund, needed to pay approved closure expenditures incurred in fiscal year 2014-2015, now therefore be it resolved as follows, the 2015, 2014-2015 fiscal year budget is amended as follows. And those are, um, line items detailing the landfill closure expenditures that have been approved by the board and by DEP.
The move, Ms. Chairman. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McLemore. Thank you. Second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion? Any of the board members have any questions, concerns? Not? Anyone in the audience? Having none? We having opposition to the motion? Having none, motion passed five and O.
The second resolution is for the BP and Restore Act Fund. A resolution reads, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, has unanticipated revenue in the BP and Restore Act Fund and whereas said revenue is needed to pay expenditures incurred in fiscal year 2014-2015, now therefore be it resolved as follows, the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget is amended as follows. This covers, um, the anticipated NYIP grant and those expenditures as well as a, um, just a line item amendment cleanup for the BP settlement funds.
Well, entertain the motion. By Commissioner McLemore. Your second?
Second to motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Nguyen. All right. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience have any concerns? Having none, is any opposition to the motion? Opposition, motion passes five and O.
The last can all be approved as one vote if you would like. This would be budget amendment 11 through 19. That will be the rest of that packet.
11 through 19.
Yes, sir. These are just amendments to the 2015, 2014-2015 budget, um, primarily just cleaning up within departments, those variances, um, to get actual and budget in the same line item. And you have a separate one for each fund. General fund and public works are covered under one. The fire districts are covered under one and then each separate fund has its own budget amendment. That's why there's so many.
11 through?
11 through 19. Uh, budget amendment 11 through?
One vote.
Yes, sir.
Let's do it all. Send move, Ms. Chairman. All right, motion by Commissioner McLemore. Got a second by Commissioner Barnes. Is any other board discussion? Having none, anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience, is any opposition? No opposition, motion passes five and O.
That's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you've put in.
I appreciate it.
Sherry and thank the clerk. That's good. All right, that takes care of B. This time we're going to item number C, public access purchase. I'll go back over to Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We had discussed in the past the possibility of acquiring public access to the Cape beaches on the Gulf side to, to increase the participation by DEP for a future beach nourishment project. A lot became available, one came available a month, month and a half ago that went pretty quick. But a lot became available. I dealt with the, the realtor, negotiated a rate with the realtor per county regulations. Uh, with a contingency that it's only valid if the county commission approves. Today, you can approve it or you can disapprove it. The, um, the lot was on the market for 125, made an offer and owners went back up, blew my offer to 115. Uh, did make contact and have it in writing from MRD, Mark Budnerbrowski, he's our coastal engineer. He did our last nourishment project. And Michael, and I can give you, I can give board members a copy of this. The parcel will fill an eligible shoreline without any overlap, so it's a great location. Parcel can fit any parking vehicle spaces and create it for another four, 16 bike racks for four to one. This is all based on a state former for state participation and then the maximum DEP would participate in the beach nourishment projects, 50% of the cost. Uh, this lot is 81 by 122. You can pick up 22 and parking spaces and some bike spaces. The, um, the return on investment, if we do this and you do a beach nourishment project, the return on investment based on a $15 million project is 233,530. The cost of this lot is 115. And that, that, that came back yesterday, the, from the owner on the, on what they would take for the lot. So you get, you can double your money on the return. It, and that is if you do a beach re-nourishment project. My assumption is you'll have to do a beach re-nourishment project at some point in time. Otherwise, it'd be bad if we didn't. But, um, that location is on Aruba Drive. It's, actually the lot is actually on 30E and Aruba. There's a, an easement to the water and it's about a 750 foot, uh, distance from 30E to the water. And what this does, uh, from the point, when, once you get down to the end of easement next to the water, from that point, you can calculate a quarter mile back towards 30E and up the road and also from the beach again, up Aruba, up to 30E, down the road. And you get a, for a quarter mile each way. And so if you up on 30E, anywhere within that quarter mile area, then the state of Florida would participate maximum amount, which would be 50% of the cost of nourishment on that part of the beach. It would actually give you 1.55% of area on that beach, um, for, for maximum participation. So it's board decision. I've got, I have a, um, have an agreement with the owner where the contingency, the county commission would have to agree to it before it goes any further. But with that said, it's gonna cost you $115,000. We didn't budget, we didn't budget for this lot. Uh, you'd have to take the money out of reserve for contingency. And my goal would be at some point in time to get the money back in your pot to replenish what we took out of the pot. And just throw a couple of things out that you might could do. Want, just do an MSTU. You do not have to have a vote to, to establish an MSTU. You have to have a vote on the MSTU for bonding purposes. For one year at a time, you don't have to have a vote. And if you take today, we, we have a company worth taxable value of 1.4 billion dollars, which means a mill is worth 1.4 million dollars. One tenth of a mill would be 141,000 dollars. Just an idea how to replenish the copper within a year's time. If you were to put a one tenth mill countywide, you could pick up 141,000 dollars based on today's value. Another, another way would be if you, if you put MSTU on the peninsula, on the properties on the peninsula. So bottom line is, this, this piece of land is gonna cost 115. The return on investment is gonna be double that. And, and you could, you could place MSTU in a year's time, countywide, pick up 141. And if, if you did, just, I'm just throwing it out, not if we're gonna discuss it today, but on MSTU, um, we, we have probably fallen short on having public access to, to the Gulf, to the lagoon, to the bay, to the river, to, to the Dead Lakes. There's a lot of areas that public could get to. But MSTU can do it one year at a time. And it's just an idea. I just wanna throw it out. One way, one, you could just simply spend your contingency money and not do anything else. But idea would be, this picks up, this doubles your money. And, um, and doubling the money here, you could do it again. You can double the money again on another lot and another one. And, and just while talking, at some point in time, if we had enough of these lots along Cape San Blas Beach, there'd be no point driving on the beach, 'cause you can get to the beach anywhere you want to. And, and just, you get to your fishing hole without driving to the beach, which the spinoff could be several things. Sheriff wouldn't have to go down and close the gate at night and you wouldn't have to worry about a vehicle on the beach and, and all the complaints, the dozens of complaints we get per year on vehicles on the beach. And it could, it could have some good spinoffs, but that's way on down the road. Today, all we have is one lot, pretty good price on the lot. It's, the rate is cheaper than, um, three other lots in the area that sold here recently. And, um, with your consideration.
All right, is that all, Mr. Butler?
That'd be all.
Thank you, sir. McLemore?
Yes, sir. Excuse my comment on this, uh, kinda let the board know how I feel about it. Number one, we don't even know if we're gonna get a, a restoring project on the beach down there. Number two, I'm not for raising our taxes by property here. So, that being said, you know, that's the way I feel. So y'all, I won't support it. You know where I'm at with it. There's a lot of, lot of variables in, in this and it, it is a long, long term thing. It may work, it may not. We may, we may not have a beach in five years down there. We don't know. There's no way I'm gonna support it.
But any other commissioners?
Um, I, I have a, one comment. Do we have?
You have the floor.
Do we have, um, a copy of the aerial shot from the property appraiser site or something that would show us what piece of property that we're talking about?
And if you could get that too, that'd help out too.
It's hard to point it out or not. The, uh, the lot we're looking at, yeah, you got, that's your pointer?
That's my pointer.
Actually, don't. Yeah, yes. The, uh, it's hard to, hard to see. Uh, Ree, Satsbrad, Tiffany, Antilles, Antigua and Aruba. Uh, just, just north of Cancun and Consonell, Jamaica, Tabago. But Aruba, right on the corner of 30E and, and Aruba, it was a lot. It's, it's, it's in line with those houses. You see all those houses that are built on the angle. They're datum, they used to be ten up, you know, they're datum there. And it'd be right up on the road. If the, uh, the calculation. The calculation goes, actually goes from here up to where a quarter mile ends. And also from here to 38, down to where a quarter mile. And where those two lines are, that's on that one page there. Uh, by long years, it's taken for participation, maximum amount for this part of the beach. It's in the area of the beach that we don't have access. And it does not overlap with any other access. And it leaves room for additional, for additional purchase. And the, the idea is, if you buy 115 and get 230 back, you made 115. And, and a public has another access point to the beach. Uh, that's a dedicated down Aruba Drive, that's dedicated access to those law owners on Aruba. So we, we have that. So, and if we could, if we could go down on, on Sherry, we don't have a whole lot of access on Cape San Blas. Yeah, and just so everybody's clear of where we are. This is Stone Hole. This is Stone Hole. These properties belong to D U P. And there's, you do them, there's rock out here, but that's D U P property. And, but you can't cross that, that's a developed property. This is a fishing land we bought in 2008, a nourishment project. And that's, that's our, we'll walk here, jog over to the beach. And then you go next one to the north.
And the next one is the subject property that we just looked at.
Spin it around.
Random.
Then, the next public property is, there's a rich park. And we went in a few, you see, we put a trail from here, but it's a long way down, a long way to walk to get to the beach. The department's okay with doing that by them. But that's a long way, that's a long hike to get to the beach. And then the next available place to make it down, you know, here's Dune Drive. And we have, this is one of our primary parking spaces. We have on Dune Drive and in agreement over here, we have 100 parking slots there. We didn't show the ones with Cape Horns. Probably have about five points. Cape San Blas, we get to the beach.
I don't remember Cape Horns.
At Stone Hole, we have a core deal site to get to the beach. And then we have the, we have the, uh, on one side, we bought 2008. We acquired a piece of land when we did the beach nourishment project, just north of Stone Hole. And we got parking area right there across from the coast. Yeah, we have, we have, that's the primary access point there. We have, actually, that gives us half mile of the beach. Half mile down the beach, six parking spaces. Primary is. We had three primaries, one at Dune Drive, one at parking space at Dune Drive. Also, I have also Cape Horns. Got three primaries, you get to half mile. We weigh on that and still. Four miles, we weigh on that. We're gonna have about five points to get to the beach. This was, this would give one in an area that we don't have overlap. It doesn't do any good by a lot right next to it. It's just a lot because you're only increasing the width of lots.
Somehow I've missed catching.
It is on this map here for the board. And I think that's probably all we need right there.
Evernig, we have one other question if you. Okay, just a minute. The commissioner here still has a floor.
And I'm just gonna, I, I, I'm guessing that there's not, but there's no association involved with this property and no deed restrictions, um, and attached to that access that the property enjoys to the beach?
The attorney didn't hear, he didn't listen to it.
And back is easement to the beach.
And it was easement to the beach and part of it, we have a feasibility for 21 days that we provide a title report. So I'll examine that as well prior to closing off.
Okay, but you don't believe that there's any kind of an association? Okay. What about, um, the actual access? Does it, does it appear to, you know, I, I, it would have been, I would have liked to have seen this ahead of time so I could have actually gone there and physically looked at the site. Um, what is gonna be the impact of the public accessing that easement to the people who live in that area?
It's one of about nine lots on that road. Each one of those lots, and I think the roadway by those houses is about 30 foot wide. I think 30 feet wide. And each one of those lots has access to the beach. So, and this one is on the road. So all the people will buy each one of all those eight houses.
I think, I am all for us having access to the water throughout the county. I think that is so important. I came here from Broward and Palm Beach Counties, two of the largest counties in the state with a lot of water and water that is very difficult to access, um, for the public. And it's a shame. And I, I'm all in favor of us having access to the water. And I, I, I understand that when something comes available, we have to act or we'll lose out. I, I am just finding out about this location now, so it's, it's hard for me to comment on whether this is a good location. Um, I, I would just have to rely on, on the comments from, from staff or anybody from the public. But also the, the folks that live in the area, if, I don't know what the access physically looks like that the public would be traversing to get to the beach and what type of impact it would have on the homeowners in that area. And I would want to be certain that it, it wasn't going to, um, affect their quality of life. And then my other issue would be, prior to final approval of a, a purchase price, I would want to see either comparative market analysis or, or an appraisal be done, um, on the price on that lot to be certain that, you know, it's, it's exactly the same kind of things that I would do if I was buying it personally. Um, I think that we should have that same due diligence if we're purchasing it on behalf of, of the county. But I, I'm in favor of us finding ways to have access to the beach and to assist with the financing. And I know that those access points help with getting, uh, the state dollars in for, for funding the, um, the beach re-nourishment and also addresses the issue of the beach driving. I'm just not certain that I have enough information to make that decision today, but I want to be in favor of this.
Is that all, Commissioner? All right, Commissioner Barnes here.
I, I went down and looked at the lot and, and I had some of the same things that you had. And, and Mr. Butler and, uh, and the attorney had, uh, checked the same things that, uh, Commissioner just mentioned. All, all indications, even the agent, he, he also looked at it right on, Budnerbrowski.
I sent it to him. I emailed it to him.
Because we understand that we're in the right place and we're very lucky to get a place down there. Uh, we have had some more a while back before I came on the board. But if you, this is something that has to be done or either you lose. And so I know that when you double your money. There's not a person sitting in here that I guarantee you, if you thought you, you could double your money, you would do it. And, uh, to me, you know, with this, I welcome everybody to give their opinion.
Anything else, Commissioner? Now let me swing, let me, Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, sir. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I understand what the, I mean, what the Commissioner's saying, Commissioner Bryan also. My, my question would be, I know we got, I mean, it's on the agenda for today. Do we have to move on it today? Could we get a chance to go see it and probably answer some of the questions that she, that she raised? And could we move, could we make that decision on day?
I can sort of answer part of it. The attorney answered the rest. My agreement with the owner is that it was contingent upon the board agreeing to it today. But either you agree to it or not agree to it. And there was no obligation of the board by me doing it.
Everybody hold just a moment. Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Now, let's go back. Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, let, um, let Mr. Attorney read the legal part that he does much better than I do, um.
The question was, had to be today. That was the last of your.
Yeah, the, the contract proposal that's been offered by the agent is a standard far bar contract, which the Florida Association of Realtors and the Florida Bar Association, there's standard provisions that are put in all these real estate contracts. One of them in there that we stipulated to is contingent on your approval to move forward, we also require a 20-day feasibility. During that period, as I mentioned, the commission will review the title work, make sure it's a clear title to the property and respond to them if it's not. The other feasibility issues, we've requested that 20-day window. 20 days from this Thursday will put us on December 8th. So we can exhaust and examine all this property. Um, and then obviously we'll be back before you on that Tuesday morning for your regular meeting in beginning of December. Um, if we make the contract date this Thursday, then that will give us that 20 days to come back to you all, report to you all, and then satisfy that requirement after that commission meeting that morning.
All right, now Commissioner Quinn, you you still have the floor. You through?
Thank you, sir, all right. Now, I've got a question or two on it. Commissioner Mclemore, you said you weren't gonna be for any of this.
I'd like to go back just four minutes if I.
I'll grant you that.
Okay, I do have one more question.
Sure, okay, this is very important.
I'd like to clear up, number one, I'm really not against trying to purchase property, you know, for the beach access. But what I'm against is taking, having to take the money out of our reserves and we will we will have to raise property values by one tenth of a mill. If I'm correct on this, property taxes, have to increase our taxes. I'm against that. My question is, now, Mr. Butler, is there any way that we could dip into maybe some BP funds or other attorneys to pay for this without having to go that avenue? That's my question.
Thank you.
It won't be immediate, I think the answer would be, Mr. Yeager, can you help me out, please? But I think it's a possibility, it's a possibility we we designated, we we put in arms around some of the money for land acquisition for public access to not only the beach, to the bay, to the lagoon, to the dead lakes, to the river system where the public doesn't have access. Possibility, it won't be quick, it won't be today. Today, or in between days, the county commission will write a check. You know, you can take out a reserve, can't necessarily do that with restorments.
Right. Okay, let's go here.
As far as the Restore Act funds, we we do have some good news, we're getting approved for our planning grant, it looks like. I got a a an email from Representative Graham's Chief of Staff that had been sent an email from Treasury that that we're fixing to get our planning grant, which is is the grant to write the multi-year implementation plan that'll take us until about August. The problem is, is you won't have any money available over and beyond that planning grant for acquisitions until August, probably August of next year. And I'm trying to move that timeframe up as as fast as we can, but it may not be available till August. You, as a as a board, have told me that acquisitions to our our waterways has been one of the interests for all of us. So we're putting some some acquisitions that we know that we we can acquire from the river river systems and all. We're looking for some along the bays and that type thing. And to to give my phrase, at the end of the day, we're gonna try to get as many acquisitions as we can because that seems like something that all of you have as priority number one. And that's something that we failed to do twenty-five years ago is to 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 acquire property, to access our our natural resources. And we're we're scrambling for that now. But to the short answer is, the available money for BP will be available for pot one in August, probably of next year. So we're behind.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yeager. All right, let me ask a few questions here concerned this is for the public. This is a corner lot, it has direct access to the beach or to the water. Mr. Butler, let me look over here, you mentioned with, I think it's with DEP, one point five five percent. What are we now compared to where we will be if we, give me some numbers here?
Okay, yeah, what this would do, if you were to acquire a piece of land, it would increase that participation by one point five five percent, which would equate to two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Which would be half of that would be what you pay for the lot. And then you would gain the other half.
All right, let me ask another question here. It's always boils down, everything boils down to money. Two questions, really. First of all, have we accumulated any interest on our reserve money? Do we have, we have a reserve, I know, I was looking over some numbers, one one point something million dollars we had increased. Or maybe I need to go to the clerk on that. I'm trying to figure out where can we come with this hundred and fifteen thousand dollars? Have we have we accumulated any or? I know that, but have we acquired any, has our reserve fund? Where is it at a ma- million plus, where are we at?
Uh, last year, we had like a million and seven dollars, I'm probably off two dollars. This year, we have like a million and two range.
A million two.
Two thousand, two hundred thousand.
Million two hundred thousand. We went from one point, remember where we at, where we at? That's that's, I gotta know where we're going here.
Probably on a sheet I handed you.
All right.
It may not be on that sheet, very well.
What I'm trying to say, if we, if.
It come out, it could.
We could use that money and still not deplete into the principal part of the of the reserve.
Now, that's, I mean, that is, it is what it is, that the amount you have in reserve for contingency, that doesn't grow.
But has it grown any this year compared to last year and the year before?
Yes.
It has accumulated some money.
It has accumulated a couple of thousand.
Okay.
So you could, if you did take it out of reserve, and you don't have to determine funding source today, you can wait till the end of that twenty day period and determine which way you're gonna go on it. So you wouldn't have to vote on that part today, but you would have.
Okay.
You could take it out of reserve and still have a million plus in reserve.
You'll have.
Which is what you had last year.
Pulling it down under, all right, that's great. And the and the second and final question here. The twenty day, are we talking about, had to be finalized by when, December the eighth? I know some of the commissioners here and Quinn and wanna look, Mr. Attorney, explain that. Can we get twenty-one days, twenty-five days, are we shorthanded, or where are we at? Just explain that to us.
The proposed offer was contingent on you all authorizing us to move forward today. So a deposit and a signature to move forward, so that was a condition of this contract. If we leave today with the authorization from you to move forward, we'll go through the feasibility period. And on the eighth, we can come back and report to you that we've had examined title, the feasibility criteria's all been met. And you can instruct the county where to pull that funding from on the eighth of December at your regular meeting. The scheduled closing under the contract is the sixteenth, so there'd be another week that would transpire to work with the clerk for the funding and arrange for the closing.
Sixteenth of December.
That's correct, sir.
Been it all out there. That's good, is there? That's all I have, it do all.
Sure.
Question?
I will.
If we were to move forward with this contract, I I would want the inspection period or feasibility period to have the contingency that if this board takes this timeframe to examine the property, the value, you would get some type of appraisal or comparative market analysis, that when we come back, that for any determination that we can cancel the contract, not just for title purposes, because my guess is it probably does have clear title. But I I would want this board to be able to come back on the eighth and say, this is not gonna work for us. So I think that should be a part of the contract that can cancel if it just doesn't meet the requirements of this board.
The the offer from the county includes that additional provision right now and determine whether or not you accept they, you accept their counter. That clause has already been written into it, so you'll have that ability with the refund of all deposits.
All right.
County's termination.
I'll entertain, I think we've probably time for motion, entertain a motion for us to move forward. Now, remember, on December the eighth, we can either accept or reject with no, you know, no penalty phase toward us, so.
And and if we could, please have it on the agenda so that the public knows we're considering this and that the people who live in that area know that that's what we are considering.
Commissioner, would you like to, one of?
I'll make a motion, we go forward with the stipulations that we've already discussed.
Sure, all right, we have a motion by Commissioner Barnes, entertain a second.
I'll I'll second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bryan. We have a motion and a second, any other, any further board discussion? This motion.
Yes.
All right. Just one, one quick. Sure, sure, Commissioner Mclemore.
Is there any way, Mr. Barnes, you would put into your motion that when and if possible, we would get BP funds in, that we could reimburse this loan with BP funds?
Is there any way we could do that with this?
I don't wanna ra- I don't wanna raise our property taxes, I don't wanna do it to buy property.
Mr. Mr. Mclemore, you're asking, can we find another non-ad valorem funding source for the purchase?
Other than raising our property taxes.
I mean, that's something we can come back to and make a recommendation to you on that December eighth date. And you've heard Mr. Butler offer you that one option, but we can come back with recommendations for you on December eighth and present them to you, non-ad valorem funding sources. Okay.
I would like that.
You can make a determination where to fund it from. This is to move forward for the next three weeks past the holiday to work with the sellers, do the preliminary work. The commissioner's included a comparative market analysis, which will be a cost to the county as part of the motion. So those things will be addressed for valuation and funding.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that. I think we're all clear now, before we vote, let me go out to, we've had our turns. Commissioner, you had, yeah, all, anyone in the audience, before we vote on this motion to move forward? Anyone, any questions, concerns? Yeah, yeah, I'll see, I'll just find a poll the audience, see what we got. Come on up.
Pat Hartman, thank you. Just very quickly, this is, we've been looking for locations because it's just good business sense to bring more state money to the table and take it off of county cost. And the other thing is, is that we don't have enough beach accesses for people that own the peninsula or on the Cape, which is before you get to the rocks, we really don't have them. And the price of property is going up again. This is prices below the price of what was already been, what's been sold recently out there, similar properties. But this one sitting right on the Cape San Blas Road means that it's minimally affecting other people around it. But it is giving us access. Beach driving out there is, the sheriff had to close the beach numbers of times last summer. Right now, you don't drive on most of that beach, period, nature has stopped that. And so we're having less and less access ability, not, and until we replenish that beach, you're gonna basically close driving from the rocks to the state park. I mean, nature is doing that. So we need as many accesses as we can. It's just a good positive thing all the way around, and it also helps us with DEP understanding that this board is committed to beach restoration because we were getting rumblings up there that 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 they were, didn't, weren't favoring our grant request for the funding for this year. So we need to have some positive information going up to them that we really are trying. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartman.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, as far as that comparative market analysis goes, I assume that there's a Realtor that has this listed and they should be able to produce, and, you know, just a CMA on the market.
Requested.
Without without a cost.
Before we vote, let me clear up one other issue here. The administrator brought up an MSTU for the entire county for a tenth of a mill. Now, not only, and I don't know, that tenth of a mill, what'd you say, generate a hundred, a little over a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? If we ever, this would be a good way, I know when Commissioner Mclemore and I, we live in the north end of the county and we we river people, we love our river like you people love your beaches and all, we love the beaches too. But if something's come up, we had a little, if we ever decide to go that route, we would have a little reserve money if something come open, a piece of land up there that we need to buy for boat ramp or parking, we would have it. If something come down here, it been everything, I don't wanna get the idea that we're doing this just to, for a certain little geographical area, that's not true. If something come up in Nova Street, we've got this little old fund, we could always sunset it if we ever implemented it. But there's where that tenth of a mill comes from, it's just some money that you could put back in the cookie jar and when you need it, you'd have some available. I just wanna clear, all right, no one else from the public, at this time, the motion was to move forward. Is there any opposition to this motion, and we'll report back, yes, my understanding, on the eighth, at our regular December the eighth meeting? Any opposition? If not, this motion passed five and oh.
Let me say one thing, I'm glad to see that vote and as Dr. Hartman said, that's, that will show Tallahassee and the state that we are trying to do something. We are together. That means a lot to them, I promise you that.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you just mentioned, one of the options that the administrator presented to you was an MSTU. Statute one ninety-seven requires you to adopt a resolution prior to January one of this year, just as you did at your last meeting for consideration of a bond referendum to put to those special taxing districts. If it's your will of the board to consider that issue for an MSTU of a tenth of a mill, as Mr. Butler had mentioned, you'll need to authorize us to advertise it. I'm looking at the calendar, you know, we're right there, but if you're going to consider it as a possible funding source, then a resolution will be needed to be introduced at the eighth, and you'll need to advertise it the eighteenth, twenty-fifth, second, and seventh. So I'll need a vote of the board to instruct us to advertise that public hearing for that as a possible funding source if you wish to consider it before the end of the year.
I just threw that out there, we don't have to, it can be in something for the future. We don't have to, it can be for the future, but it's just to just to accumulate a little money, everybody throws a little in the hat and we can go, something comes along, we buy it, that's all, that's all.
Anything you wanna buy?
No, and I definitely don't wanna raise my property taxes, bottom line. Well, I don't either, for some time I did, I had to do, I voted twice for the school to help the children.
Okay, all right, we've got item number C, the public access purchase. The next one is emergency declaration due to tropical storm Patricia. Mr. Butler, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, due to the storm we had a few weeks ago, did did a lot of damage to to the beach from Stumpole up to Sunrise Sunset, or maybe just north of that point, did damage to the whole beach. But the the houses that are closer to the water down on that lower end of the beach, and I see no skin off the board's teeth if the board were to to put things in order as a emergency decoration that will allow the property owners to protect the houses that may be in peril, that that may get damaged if we don't do something. And what it does, we'd wind up giving a permit, a temporary permit, to go in and do some some protection around the house. And they were within sixty days, they'll make contact with DEP and make a application with DEP for a permanent fix of what they're trying to do. So there's some, it could be, it could simply be sand that they want several loads of, beach compatible sand they want around the house just to buy a little time until till we got the permanent permit. But if the board could declare that local state of emergency for for that until, give people opportunity to come in and get the permit, it'd be a temporary permit, it's allowed by DEP to to come in and do temporary measures, take temporary measures to protect the houses, which will buy them a little time to to, it's gonna take a while, probably, I don't know, six months to get a permit, a permanent permit to put a retaining wall or whatever, more sand or whatever they wanna do around the house. For the board's consideration, declaring a local state of emergency on that, on the Cape San Blas Beach due to that tropical storm.
That it, Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mclemore?
Question for you, Mr. Butler. If we declare this, now, are we going to go out and get the DEP permit to do this?
Yes, sir.
It should be their property owners that'll get each individual permit?
If they need it.
They can apply for it.
They will, they will, one, come in to to the county, this allows you to issue a permit, a temporary permit to safeguard the house, to protect the house while they're getting their permanent solution figured out and permitted. So really, no cost to the board.
Okay.
No cost to you.
That's good.
Thank you, any other, any other questions on this? All it primarily is, is we'll just use some layman's term, your roof blew off, we're gonna give you permission, put one of these blue tarps up there and you can get through the procedures and get your roof fixed, that's, just try to help the people, that's that's all this emergency declaration is. Anyone else?
Someone to move forward?
All right, we got a motion, we got a second by Commissioner Barnes. Any other board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience, any concern over this matter? All right, if there's no opposition, we will, this motion passes five and oh for emergency declaration individuals. Butler, gonna go down to item E, ship change orders. You gonna address that or?
I asked, Mr. Joe Paul.
Joe, come on up. Mr. Paul, come on up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. These are kind of short and sweet. We do have two change orders that I presented in front of you today. I also emailed them on Thursday. Hope you all got a chance to look at them. The first one is for Mr. Elmo Sanders, 281 North Canal Drive. When we took his roof off, we found trusses rotted in two, not even close to adequate insulation. When we checked the air conditioning system that we, they said was working good, and we checked it, we found out it was not in good shape at all. Mr. Elmo Sanders is a disabled veteran. The change order for his house is for ten thousand, six hundred, forty-two dollars and ninety cents. That will bring the house up. You need to go by and look at it if you haven't, because it was just not a very good place to begin with, but he is bedridden, and his house, when he gets done, will be the best that we can possibly make it be. And this ten thousand dollars will not exceed the forty thousand dollar per ALHAP.
Move, Mr. Chairman?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ryan. Second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to bring this, bring this out here because I've been here a long time, and we always go through this with these ship projects, and you do an excellent job with them. But we always have problems. There's going to be a rotten board, there's going to be a bad shingle or something. Is this something that Mr. Paul needs to come back to the board every time to get permission from us? Or is this something...
Commissioner, according to the current policy, yes, sir, it is. There's actually a draft policy that'll be in your consent agenda eighth December to take that burden off of you.
Okay, that'd be good, because, like I say, you do, y'all, we've always done, y'all have an excellent job with trying to rebuild these old homes, and I just, I don't see any sense in having to come back to the board on every single dollar when we have administrator that can handle these projects. That's where I'm getting at.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Mr. Elmo Sanders, and it's located in the Old Street area there. Know the gentleman and his wife very well. Any further board discussion? If none, anyone in the audience? Yes, we have the second come up. If not, if there's no opposition, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second one is for Ms. Thelma Luce's house at 108 Apollo Street. This bid actually came in considerably less than what we thought it would be. In the meantime, this lady is currently residing in the nursing home. They're trying to bring her home in December, and to bring the house up to all the standards that are needed to bring her home. We discovered some damage in the cabinet area and things that need to be done. There was an entryway into the laundry room that was not handicapped accessible. Even though she will have family there helping her, she does like to get around in her wheelchair. We also actually have a letter that I did not present to you, but I do have it in the file, from the caseworkers at the nursing home concerning her quality of life and how much better her quality of life is if she is able to actually spend some time outdoors, actually vitamin D therapy. So what we've done is gone back in with the changes that needed to be done, and to bring this house up to standards, get her home from the nursing home. She is also disabled and is one of our set-asides to help the disabled. The change order's for seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that will bring her home up to speed, and that also does not exceed the forty thousand dollars per ALHAP.
But I'll entertain a motion.
No move, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Any other board discussion? Change order. Anyone in the audience, any concerns or discussion? None? No opposition? Pass five and oh for the change order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move down to item F. We only have, we've got F, G, and H. We had a F now, and this is a request from the city of Port St. Joe to assist in demolition and removal of houses. Mr. Butler? No, we'll go to Mr. Quinn on this one. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, sir.
You take the lead on this, please.
Yes, sir. City, like I said, the city has asked that we assist them, get our staff to assist them with some removal and demolition of some houses that are, that are causing some issues inside the, in the city limits. So I'm going to make, make a motion to allow our staff to work along with the city to help get these things accomplished.
All right, sir. You going to make the motion?
Yes, sir.
You got the motion? Do I hear a second to this motion?
Second.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, but I would like to request if there's any block, brick, or whatever that we may use in these destructions, you know, that we receive that, because that's riffraff. I mean, that stuff is something we use all the time. So if there's any of that, I'd like to request.
Concrete or anything you want.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, will we be cleared on the liability of this county on that?
Commissioner, what we've done in the past is we'll provide them an indemnification hold harmless form, and the city has signed it in the past before we've gone on any private property in cooperation with the city to clear them off.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Just a couple of questions. Is there a certain timeframe or number of properties that are involved here? My concern, and, and, you know, what is the staff involvement? Is that just work crews? My concern is the, all of the work that we're behind on. So, you know, do we have some kind of definition of what this means as far as assistance goes?
Okay. Let me, let me get you an answer right here. Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is, what I see, Jim Anderson sent an email. He had four houses. I know at least two of them, two or three of them are real small houses, and they're rotting down. I made contact with Mark, dealing with solid waste. We are at, we're at the point of closing our landfill. And today, today, as of right now, we haven't got DEP okay yet, I mean, permit to close the landfill. So we still, we have a landfill, we have a certain slope we have to have in that landfill, and we can't wind up here with a flat top, so we have to have field. We, I say all that to say this, we can use this as field instead of filling it with dirt, because we have to haul with dirt. So we have, we have capacity in landfill to do it. It would be a joint venture between Gulf County and the city of Port St. Joe, and tearing the houses down and moving the houses to the landfill. And I don't think it takes too long to move a house, to tear it down and move it. And I don't know if this can be done in a day's time, but I think it could probably be done in a couple of days' time of these four, and they, they're frame houses. I think all I saw was frame houses. And, but there's ample capacity in the landfill. We, now, once we get that permit from DEP, we can not put anything else in the landfill. So we're okay right now, and this can take the place of some dirt and clay without tides, because we gather, we can't have a flat top, we got to have points at the top. So a joint venture, there'll probably be some work crews working on it, but I can't see it lasting more than a day or two.
Okay, so it's really just these four houses today that we're voting on?
That's, that's all I've seen.
That it, Commissioner Quinn?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we, can we get the location of these for the record? There was some confusion in the past on which ones had been approved and not approved. So if we can get those for the record, that would be great.
We can get them. I don't want...
Don't have any...
I got it on my email from Mr. Anderson, but I don't have it.
I don't think I have it. We can get it. Give you a printout.
Okay. If you could just send it to Leanna, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, basically, it's email from last week or week before last.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right? No opposition? Motion pass five and oh. Let's say we've helped not here, and I know up in the district I represent, we went in and done some of the same things. It cleans up, clears up, cuts down on a lot of maybe safety issues, and just actually helps the neighborhood a little better. We work with the city of St. Joe, and we have a good working relationship with them, and they'll help us, and we'll help them when we can. All right, at this time, we're going to move to G stump hole. HMGP ratification or modification number three. Who we got out here by this? Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir. I'm going to let Carrie hit me out on this. This is asked for, the county commissioner asked for an extension to the grant we got for the stump hole. The reason for it is it took most of the year to get a permit, and it's running out quickly. And it won't be long, we're going to be asking for an extension again, because the suggestion is that we don't do any of this work during turtle nesting season. So we don't have time now to go in, advertise, select the contractor, and mobilize, and get it done by the first day of May. So it looks like it's going to be midsummer before we ask to advertise and get this done. But meantime, the grant days are running.
We got to extend this grant.
Let Carrie explain the details on it.
Okay. Carrie?
This was, it is modification number three. It's through the Division of Emergency Management. It's our HMGP for the stump hole. This is extending it through December 31st. This was previously approved by the board. We never received the contract from Division of Emergency Management. It was sent to the wrong email address, so we just got it week before last, and they had to have it back as soon as possible. So it is already been approved, so what we're doing today is just ratification for this. And this is just through the 31st of December, and we're going to have to request another extension, but we're going to do that later.
All right, so this, like I say, just move this to the end of the calendar year.
Yes.
Yes, we do. All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Barnes.
Second.
Second on this extent.
Second motion.
We got one by Commissioner Quinn. Any other board discussion? None? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? No opposition? Motion pass five. All right? Thank you, Carrie. Ladies and gentlemen, the last item, item H, MYIP, approval of grant from Treasury. That is Mr. Jaeger. Come on up, Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. A little bit of good news. Last Thursday afternoon, I received a email from Hill Thomas, who is the deputy chief of staff for Gwen Graham. He had been notified by Treasury that they were going to issue a grant award to Gulf County. Now, we hadn't received that at that time, but we were anticipation that within five days of that, we would receive that notification from Treasury, and I was going to get your approval based on that with, with thinking it was coming. Well, while I was sitting back there a few minutes ago, I did get the notice from Treasury that there's an award, an award awaiting our acceptance. I haven't had the opportunity to go completely through that award, but in, in Mr. Thomas's email, it's in the, it's for the full amount. We actually thought that it might be for a partial amount, and then you get the full amount later. It's for the full amount. Now, this goes back to almost 2014, some of the documentation that we've provided of time that staff and all has put into this work. This will take us through August of next year, but the amount is for five hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty-five cents. So that's, that's, it's a planning grant. This is going to get us through writing our multi-year implementation plan and then submitting to Treasury for our, for our other dollars. So what I need out of the board is, is an acceptance of the award of, of our money that we have in Treasury, basically, is what I'm asking for.
Little over a half million.
Little over half a million.
Question?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's recognize.
Question? Question? Do we specifically have to use this money for grant writing purposes only, or how is this money?
We, what we did is, is went back over the years that we've been working on this. We've, we've got staff time in this. We've got, we've got the actual consultant that has been working on this for six months with no pay, which they knew upfront that they were not going to get paid until this planning grant was approved. So what this goes back is, is paying back for, for previous staff time and paying forward for staff time and our consultant and other things that we've run into expenses for. So the way this works too now is not just they're going to send us a check for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What they're going to do is we're going to have to work with the clerk's office and invoice Treasury for these dollars, and then they will reimburse us. And, and the consultant will have to do the same thing. As they submit their invoices, we'll submit them to Treasury, and Treasury will, will give us the money.
There's your lot, Mr. Butler. There's your lot of money.
No move?
Okay. Okay, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mclemore on the acceptance of this five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We got a second by Commissioner Barnes. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any questions, concerns? If we don't have any opposition, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Lauren. And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the items for this special meeting closing. Let me say thank you for coming today. Very important that people come and know what's going on in their government, come